Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Reinert. Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Gamash.
Here.
Commissioner Jepson.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Okay, we're all here but for one commissioner and I believe he will be coming a little bit later. The next item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item five is consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 in purchase card claims paid for the period ending April 21st, 2023.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Item six is the approval of minutes for April 25th, 2023 county board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Meisner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Any changes, additions, subtractions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, and that, those minutes pass as well. So, we have, under Chair's remarks, one item here this morning, and we were going to have Commissioner Reinert cover this, but I will, I will cover that for him. Under the one Chair's remarks today, we want to recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Anoka County. As I mentioned, Commissioner Reinert, Chair of the Human Services Committee, was going to cover this and to speak about some of the importance of this month. And this month, we draw attention to, extra attention, to fighting mental health stigmas, providing support, educating the public, and advocating for policies that support millions of people per year who are affected by mental health struggles. Mental, mental illness can happen to anyone, and about one in five adults experience mental health conditions each year, according to the National Alliance of Mental Illness. When we do the math, that's one in five equates to about 43.8 million people a year. This isn't an uncommon problem, but when people are dealing with mental health issues, they often feel alone and lost. So it's important during May and throughout the entire year to increase awareness about mental health, so people who are struggling know they're not alone. It's also important to talk about mental health resources, because with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full and productive lives. Here with us today to speak about Anoka County's efforts on the front is Denise Kermis, the Behavioral Health and Adult Services Manager, and I want to invite her up, and thank you for being here, Denise.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the county board. I'm Denise Kermis, Senior Manager for Behavioral Health and Adult Services. So nice to see you all. Really appreciate being here to raise some awareness on mental health and also offer some resources. I'm using information from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. It's a government agency. They have a toolkit that they have every month, or every year, that they share about mental health resources, so I am going to use a little bit of information from there. When it comes to mental health, small actions equal a big impact. If you are worried about your mental health or are worried about someone you know, there are resources and people out there that are willing to help, no matter what your situation is. Talking about mental health helps promote acceptance and encourages people to ask for help. Whether we share resources, encourage others to seek help, or simply are there for someone when they need us, we instill hope and can help others to reach out when they need us the most. Let me use my reading glasses. Self-care is important for your mental health. We can't say that, stress that enough. Despite the stress in our lives, there are many things that you can do to maintain positive mental health, including self-care. Mental health is essential to your overall health and quality of life. When you take care of yourself, your physical and emotional health improve, and you become more resilient and can find ways to manage stress in healthy and positive ways. Taking care of yourself is an essential part of your mental health. Excuse me. We play a part in one another's mental wellness. Language really matters. The language we use to talk about mental health can either perpetuate prejudice and discrimination, or promote acceptance and compassion. When it comes to mental health, words really matter. It is up to each of us to be a lifeline, sharing in a commitment to care for ourselves and those around us. When we use open and compassionate language around mental health issues, we empower ourselves and encourage others to find the help that they need. So let's support each other and make it okay to reach out and seek help whenever we need it. If you are worried about your mental health or are worried about someone you know, there are resources and people out there who are willing to help, no matter what your situation is. No matter the situation, there's always help and there's always hope. So what if someone talks to you about their mental health? Here are just some tips and ideas that might really help you when they talk to you about mental health. First thing is to listen. Let them finish their sentences and complete their thoughts without interrupting. After they have finished, you can respond. Let them know that, that you understand. If someone has just spilled their guts and you've gone through something similar, tell them. It helps a lot for someone to know that they aren't alone. Make sure you don't switch the topic of conversation to your struggles, though, and focus on their needs. Another thing to do is to avoid being judgmental. Don't tell them they're being weird or crazy. It's just not helpful at all. Take them seriously. Try not to respond with statements that minimize how they are feeling or what they are going through, such as, "You're just having a bad week," or "I'm sure it's nothing." Just take it seriously. Make yourself available to talk again if needed. While it can be a big relief for someone to share something they have that they've been keeping secret, mental health struggles usually aren't solved in one conversation. So it's really important to let that person know that you're there and they can reach out at any time, if they're having a tough time. Also, don't turn what you've been told into gossip. If someone is talking to you about their mental health, it was probably tough for them to work up the nerve to say something in the first place, and you shouldn't share what they tell you with other people. Let them share their, on their own terms. If you don't understand, do some research and learn about what you've been told. Make sure that your information is coming from reliable sources, like government agencies and health organizations, and I'll give you some of those in other slides. It's also important to have friends that trust you, but if a friend indicates they have thoughts or plans of hurting themselves or another person, or have been hearing voices, or seeing things that no one else can hear or see, or have any other signs and symptoms that shouldn't be ignored, you need to tell someone what is going on. That doesn't make you a bad friend. It just means that the problem requires more help than you can give, and I'll be giving you those resources also. So to be informed, whoops, I just did something here. Okay. Oh. There. Sorry. So to get informed, these are some resources that I use often. NAMI, it was already mentioned, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. They are a great resource. They have a lot of stats and statistics, and they also have support groups and a lot of training, so I rely on that information from NAMI very often. MACMA is known as the Minnesota Association for Children's Mental Health. That is another great resource for parents who have children who have mental health concerns. Great information and trainings. Also, Mental Health America. I've used that as a resource very often. They also have toolkits, free toolkits that are available to agencies and to government agencies, also to use, to market different information about mental health. And then I've mentioned already the SAMPA, Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration. Great resources, lots of information. Here's a flyer from NAMI, and I found this to be a very helpful one. It says it's, "You are not alone." In here, it talks about the statistics and the prevalence of mental health, also goes into some of the demographics of mental health, and then it gives key steps to take if you need to reach out for help. Another way to get help is, I've mentioned, Mental Health America. What I like about this is it has an online screening tool, that you can go onto this website and see if you, it would screen out any type of mental health concern or diagnosis. If you need that, you can go and turn to that. Anoka County Behavioral Health is here to help you navigate the system. We have two intake numbers, 763-324-1420 for adults, and for children, 324-1430, but we have one screener, so no matter what number you call, you'll be connected into receiving some help for, for your family or for yourself. Canvas Health is our mobile crisis provider. They provide crisis response that includes short-term assessment, intervention, stabilization services, and linkages to services, and their number is 763-755-3801, and they are 24-hour service, seven days a week. We also have two, a few other resources. If you text M H A to 741-741, you'll be connected to a crisis counselor that is also available 24/7. And then 988 is a new service. If you text 988, you'll be connected to Suicide and Crisis Lifeline Service. So lots of resources out there. Other resources I've mentioned before, we have a North Metro Roundtable. It's a group of county, local mental health providers, the Sheriff's Department, Alina Health System. We get together on a regular basis and look at how we can integrate our services in our community better. Some of the examples that we have here is that we did try a pilot project with People Incorporated and also with Blaine and Coon Rapids Police Department, where we embedded mental health professionals. That now has expanded. Blaine and Coon Rapids hired their own mental health professional. And now Columbia Heights also has two providers from Canvas Health, so it's, it's really expanding. It was something that started as a pilot and now it's really expanding, because it's just been so helpful to the community. We also have a housing resource webpage that will assist people to get resources for homeless and, and housing. And then we have a suicide prevention work group. We have a number of providers that are getting together to coordinate our suicide prevention services and education. And then we are lucky for Anoka County to have two one-stop shops for mental health and chemical health. They're called Certified Community Behavioral Health Centers. We have one at People Incorporated with Family Life Mental Health Center, and also Canvas Health. These are just one-stop shop. They are able to provide a wide array of services for individuals with mental health and chemical health issues. And then we are very fortunate that Anoka County supports our employees. We have a Well at Work Clinic, a Health Partners Well at Work Clinic, for our physical health, and then we also have an embedded mental health professional that provides employee assistance to our Anoka County employees. And then we have a number of wellness rooms across our county, and we have one of our employees sitting in one of our wellness rooms. And then we also have a contract with a trauma-informed mental health professional that can help debrief us and give us some support in some situations that we find become pretty traumatic. And as social workers, we do have a few of those situations, so we are very appreciative of the support that Anoka County gives us for that. I did it again, sorry. And then these are ways to get involved. We have a local mental health advisory council, the Children's Mental Health and Adult Mental Health Advisory Council. We meet jointly every other month. The members are appointed by the county board. And they have a statutory responsibility to identify the unmet needs in our county for people with mental health concerns or conditions, and here is just the link to it for the application. And another way to get involved is we have a nonprofit organization in Anoka County known as the Mental Wellness Campaign of Anoka County. They are designed to erase and educate the public on mental illness, erase stigma. And they have a walk again this year, June 3rd, Saturday at 10 o'clock at the Coon Rapids Dam, and it's a wonderful opportunity. These are pictures of a past walk. Wonderful opportunity for people to walk, connect with each other, and raise money. And that is it. That's it for my presentation. Any questions?
Questions on the board? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not really questions. Good morning, Denise. Just commentary. I know we do this every year, and some of the stats that Chair Look shared, I mean, one in five, 43 million, but the examples that you talked about, I think, are like everyday type of scenarios, because mental health, we're all human beings. We, we all have mental health issues, right? Seasons where we feel great, seasons where we struggle, but the examples that you give, I think, really humanize it, that it is ourselves, as well as our coworkers, our neighbors. So thank you again so much for your work and for sharing some of the examples, and then what we can do.
Thank you very much.
Further board comments? No. Commissioner Jepson.
If it isn't already, could we get that, or could I, if nobody else wants it, get the presentation sent to us, please?
Definitely. I think we've posted it on the website. If I remember correctly, last year, we'll do the same this year.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Denise, for coming in and talking with us about a very challenging topic, certainly, especially as of late with the post-pandemic. You know, we've, we're kind of seeing more of this, and thank you for the insight and the information about the importance of reducing the stigma associated with mental health. And it is true what they say, that mental health is just as important as physical health, and we see that today. So what I'd like to do is introduce Resolution 2023-48 and ask the rest of the board to join me in recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Move to consider.
Okay. There's a motion, and is there a second? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I conclude Chair's remarks, I just want to remind everyone once again of the Mental Wellness Campaign for Anoka County. In sponsoring the 14th Annual Walk for Mental Wellness at 10:00 a.m., June 3rd, at Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park, the walk will start at Pavilion Number Three. Those who are interested in participating in the event can visit M W A C A C dot org slash 5K Walk to purchase tickets. People who register before May 15th will be guaranteed a T-shirt with their registration, so if you're interested in participating with that, we'll have more of that on the, on the website as well, so feel free to join up. Anyway, so that concludes Chair's remarks. We'll move on to committee reports and move into the Management Committee Report. We have one action item. We met on April 25th, and there were no chair, no public comment. The first item is consider approving the following personnel transactions. We have a restructure slash fill in the Administration License and Passport Services, where we have a 2.6 FTE Associated Service Center Specialist, grade 26, and we're changing that to a 1.0 FTE Full-Time Associated Services Center Specialist, also grade 26. So the, the dollar amounts are the same. There is a remaining 0.2 FTE that will then be eliminated as we go to a full-time position on this. Move approval? Moved by Commissioner Schulte.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. That concludes the Chair's report, or I'm sorry, the Committee, Management Committee Report. We'll move on to the Chair's report, which is, the consent items is an, item number one, which is travel considerations. You'll note, you'll notice there, so if there's a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gamash.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye. And that motion passes unanimously. Item two is, is a personnel transaction, which is a restructure fill in the Attorney's Office for effect of May 9th, vacancy due to promotion. We're moving from a 1.0 FTE Legal Assistant, grade 28, to a 1.0 FTE Paralegal, grade 30. And this is at the request of our county attorney. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Jepson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Discussion? Comments?
Chair Look, Commissioners, so you may recall that we created two trial teams within the county attorney's office, each under one of our assistant criminal division chiefs, and that's a restructure in the criminal division. We had three paralegals. We now want to move to four, so that two paralegals can service each of the trial teams. We think that's a better organizational structure. So what we're doing is we're taking an empty legal assistant position and want to fill it as a, with a paralegal. Thanks.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. That concludes the Chair Report. We will move on to the Intergovernmental and Community Relations Chair Report, and Commissioner Reinert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item for action before you this morning, and it's amendment to Anoka County Contract C 009191, 9199, excuse me. And this is to consider approving an amendment between Anoka County DBA Midwest Medical Examiner's Office and Lake Superior Transport, Inc., and for medical examiner transport services in the St. Louis County region. And I'll move that.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Moved by Commissioner Reinert. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
That completes my report. Back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reinert. We'll move on to the Parks Committee Report, and Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Parks Committee met on Tuesday, May 2nd, at Chaminde Golf Course. We were in the clubhouse, in the beautiful Blue Heron Room. We weren't on the golf course, playing it, so we were actually having a meeting, but we had two action items that day, where the committee recommended to the county board to adopt Resolution 2023 PRK 04 in support of the Coon Lake Regional Park Long Range Plan. This is the plan that's been in the works for a couple of years now, and now we're going to be moving that on to, for Met Council adoption, and that's what we're hoping for. And we had a great, it's a great plan if you've taken a look at it. There's a lot of details as to some of the changes and, and some of the upgrades in certain areas, and then the possibility, as it become, if it would become a regional park, that there's finance possibilities from the Met Council. Jeff Perry, our director, is here. Jeff, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to just an overview of the Coon Lake Park Plan. It's been in works for a while. Staff has done a great job, including Karen, who's done, has, has led the way for us with meetings and, and community meetings with this area around Coon Lake. So Jeff, I'll give you a couple of minutes to maybe talk a little bit about it.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jeff Perry, Park Director for Anoka County, and I can just touch on a couple of the highlights of the, of the long-range plan. So we'll be including some aquatic invasive species upgrades at the boat launch, so an area to pull off, so folks can inspect their watercrafts before and after launching. At the swimming beach, add some shade structures and some handicap-accessible courtesy docks and kayak docks for the public. Add some shore fishing areas, add some additional trails at the park as well, and then retrofit some of the, two of the picnic pavilions within the park as well. So just a few highlights. We worked with a number of stakeholders throughout the, the 12-month planning process, so we heard from a lot of folks around the lake and, and from the local communities of the city of Columbus, city of East Bethel, and Linwood Township. So everybody's on board with the long-range plan, and we're excited to pass it along to Met Council. And again, as Commissioner Gamash indicated, it will qualify the park and facilities for both state funding and Metropolitan Council regional dollars for both operations and maintenance and capital improvements. So with that, Mr. Chair, that's a brief overview.
Thanks, Jeff. And yeah, it's a gem. The lake is what, the largest lake, I believe, in Anoka County, and this is an opportunity for us to do some upgrades in a number of different areas, as Jeff indicated, including some of the entries into the park and, and places like that, that we should have even better passage in, so that it's easier for people to get in and out during busy times. So we got this, the committee is recommending this, and this is Resolution 2023 PRK 04. I'll let Commissioner Reinert make the resolution.
I want to offer the resolution, Commissioner Reinert.
So moved.
Okay. Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Reinert. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That resolution passes.
The next item is the committee recommends to the county board to award master contracts with the following for professional services: Civil engineering with Hawkinson Anderson of Anoka, Minnesota. That's Contract C 009963. Pioneer engineering with Mendota Heights, Minnesota, C 009965. And then we have civil and structural engineering. That's Larson Engineering of White Bear Lake, C 009964. SRV Consulting of Minneapolis, C 009966. And TKDA of St. Paul, Minnesota, C 009967. And I'll move that.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte, moved by Commissioner Gamash. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
And we did have a couple of informational items. I want to thank former Anoka County Commissioner Dennis Berg for providing information to the committee regarding some possible memorial or recognition within a county park for two residents that were, for their service in Vietnam, and we're going to look into that and, and sit down with the group that he has been working with. And I just want to thank the Commissioner for coming, as usual. Listening to Commissioner Berg is always some great stories of the history of Anoka County, and he sits on our Anoka County Historical Society, so he's always got some great stories about Anoka County in the past. But it was, it was really fun to meet with him and talk with him, and we'll have some more meetings with the group that he is representing and working with. We also received, or we got comments on the water project, the water and sewer project that's going on at Bunker Hills. That will begin probably late fall, perhaps, is our goal, so as not to disturb our season for the campers and everyone else out at the, out at the parks to get this water project done. And then finally, I just wanted to, again, thank our staff for the great work that they did, and the many volunteers that we had for the Mighty Mississippi Cleanup Challenge. We had two days in April. We selected Saturday, April 22nd, at One Park, the West, Mississippi West Regional Park in Ramsey, and then on April 26th, at the Coon Rapids Dam in Coon Rapids, we had another showing. In that time, we had 85 volunteers. And we did this in a relatively short period of time. It was just probably a little bit more than a month, just barely more than a month of time to get set up and ready to go, and that's where I want to thank the staff for all the great work they did. Those 85 volunteers removed 74 bags of trash, 50, and these are big bags, folks. I mean, they're, they're big ones. We had 53 big bags of recyclables and two truckloads of larger debris along the riverbank to help improve the quality of the river. We were looking at places along the river, not going into the river necessarily because of the high water and how fast it was, but along the river where things would get blown into the river and the next stop might be the, you know, the Gulf of Mexico. So we wanted to make sure we did our part in this challenge. So we sent that information along to Good Hugh County, and as I always indicated, there's no money involved in this. It's just, the winner is the Mississippi River. So we did a great job, and I want to thank everybody that participated, and thanks so much to the park staff for the great work they did. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Terrific. Thank you. Commissioner Gamash, thank you for your leadership, by the way, on that Mississippi cleanup, too. That's very, very good. Item number nine we'll move to, which is consider Resolution 2023-49, Resolution approving Anoka County's 2023 annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program, and authorizing submission of such grant request to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. You will see that further in your agenda there. Under item nine, there is various different areas of the block grant for funding. There's projects, public service. You'll see the breakdown there. The CDBG funds available are 1.1 million 539,479. Kind of breaks down into planning administration, competitive project pool, not a swimming pool, but the pool for those that are involved in projects is 1 million 661, and the competitive public service pool is 230,922. Those dollars cannot be moved one to the other, unfortunately, although we'd love to do that at times. Sometimes we get more requests in one, projects perhaps over public service, sometimes public service over projects, but... But we are required to spend in those respective areas. So we have that before us here, and that's a resolution. Is there an offer of that resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Gmash. Is there any discussion? Singing, non-roll call vote?
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gmash.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you for that. That almost brings us to the end of our board meeting. We have one topic we want to cover here. With deep sadness, I want to share the tragic news that our Chief Information Officer, Susan Vreeland, passed away Friday, April 21st. Susan was a valued member of our Anoka County family and team, and her contributions to our organization are immeasurable. It's been a difficult week as we collectively process our grief. I want to give some background on Susan. Susan graduated from the KRS Business and Computer School with a degree in business. She worked for LSG Sky Chiefs, Sky Chefs, sorry, Northwest Airlines in various roles before serving as a Director of Human and Technical Resource for Development Corporation for Children, a twin-city-based nonprofit organization. In December of 2005, she began her public service career at Anoka County, Administrative Services Manager for the Information Technology Department. She was then promoted to be IT Director in September 2011. She led approximately 70 staff to provide quality IT service solutions, technology, and support to our more than 2,000 employees, other local jurisdictions and the public. She was actively involved in outside professional organizations, serving as Vice Chair of the Minnesota County IT Leadership Association this year and President the previous two years. Susan was always at the forefront of championing, championing the use of technology to streamline work systems, enhance customer service, improve security, and save time and money. Some examples of this is she helped pioneer an electronic check-in system in the Veteran Service, Veteran Services Center, the License Center, and Economic Assistance Programs, which went on to be used by many others across the country. A temperature-controlled data center provided state-of-the-art protection against fire, smoke, water, and other hazards. She provided the sheriff deputies improved access to data directly from squad cars via a secure dual authentication network. She aided efforts to go from paper to electronic files, allowing staff to eliminate 350-plus file cabinets. She piloted the use of VDI or virtual desktops as a replacement for traditional desktop computers. Susan's group also developed a fleet management program to acquire, maintain, and replace the county's 2,300 computers. This allowed for greater efficiency in computer deployment, better price points, and reduced packaging materials. I could go on with all the things she's done. But all this kind of set the stage for Anoka County being well-prepared when COVID-19 changed how we did business. Because of Susan's leadership at the beginning of the pandemic, we had a smooth transition when everything shut down. She and her team helped to coordinate the deployment of 300 computers in a two-week time period, allowing employees to work from home. They implemented several connectivity configuration changes to preserve bandwidth for work-from-home users while maintaining security of the county network. IT implemented DocuSign, which allowed public and employees to sign county documents from anywhere electronically. They provided network connectivity for the courts at the Bunker Hills Activity Center to allow for an alternative courtroom that addressed the need for social distancing. And of course, WebEx, webconferencing. So meetings could go down and, you know, the public could use them on a norm, as normal as possible. These are just a few examples of Susan's leadership and service delivery accomplishments over the years. And I'm certain we can talk for an hour about what she has meant to this board, the administration, and staff. We will miss Susan more than words can express. But we know her spirit will continue to guide us as we move forward. We offer our deepest condolences to her family, loved ones, and those who worked with her. Many of us had the opportunity to work with her. And some of us had the opportunity to go to her celebration of life and had an opportunity to talk with her family and friends that were there as well. Please keep Susan and her family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Gmash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the pleasure and the honor to work with Susan for a number of years as the Chair of the IT Committee. And to say that she was a true professional would be an understatement. She was always ready for all the meetings that we had. Detailed information on some of these amazing projects just in the last few years before COVID and during COVID. But Susan was always ready and always had the great plans for moving, moving the county forward and keeping us at the, where we could be at the cutting edge of IT, even though we may not have had the budget as bigger businesses would have. She was always ready to find ways to get those things done. And I know that from, from the staff that she had, that she was a great leader for those people that were in the IT Committee or in the IT Department. She always did the best to, to help with what was needed in that area. She will be truly missed. But she was a professional. And it was a pleasure and, and a true honor to work with her. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I too was lucky that I served on the IT Committee. And so I, I won't repeat the clear professional skills and gifts that she had. She was so generous to me as a person, though, and just a sparkling personality. Commissioner Gmash kind of touched about what a tight, a tight-knit team that, that her department was. And you could really see that, which to me really speaks about what quality leadership is about. I did just want to make a note that her staff was here in the audience at the beginning of the board meeting. And so I, I just wanted to, to make note of that as well. So thank, thank you.
Anyone else? I recall serving on the IT Committee as well. And I don't know if I came late anyways, whatever the timing was. But I had expressed to her once that I was using a Windows 98 system.